Why don't we, why don't we start?
Before we get into the, the business at hand, the last, the last meeting we had was the, the last meeting that Eric Terschwell was, was a member of, of this board. He had submitted his resignation as of effective 12/31/14. And he really, he resigned because of time pressures with, with work and family. Eric had, had, had been with us probably four or five years. My memory is never the best on things like that. But he was a calm and thoughtful guy. He always got to the core of the issues and he was really able to keep us, keep us on track. He was very generous with his time. Over the last couple of years, we've had to write, or I've had to write, you know, a number of, of opinions. And Eric was always able to, to turn the, the dribble that I prepared into, into stuff that was, was very masterful. He is a special, he's a special purpose, person and we're really, we're really going to miss him. We, we, I believe yesterday, the, the Board, Board of Trustees approved John Moss moving up to becoming a, a regular member of the Board. And a fellow named Joe Capasso is going to be joining us at, at future meetings as our, as our alternate. Joe was not here tonight, but even if he were, he would not, not be in a position to vote because he has not been, been current with, with what we've been doing. Right now, I want to ask John, just to ask him if he has caught up on the proceedings that, that he missed last time? And if there's anything, any questions he has, or are you comfortable that you are where you should be?
Yeah, I, I saw the entire hearing, all two and a half hours of it. I've read all the materials, both old and new, so I think I'm good to go.
Okay, is that satisfactory with the applicant? That he, he'd be allowed to vote even though he wasn't in attendance last time? Okay. Okay, one other thing. We'll be making a decision tonight on a, on a project that's been controversial from day one. Our decision and each of our votes will not be based on what we think of the project or what opponents think of the project. It'll be based on each of our interpretation of the law. And in this case, the, the law is, is the code of the Village of Dobbs Ferry and all the things that, that go with it. Division Plan, the LWRP, and the like. In this appeal, we're acting as if we were the AHRB and we're obligated to base our individual votes on how we believe the project has or has not met the tests of the AHRB per the code. And that's what we'll do. The applicant will win or lose the appeal based solely on the law. And the opponents may be happy or may be sad, but there will not be winners and losers. There will, there will just be a decision that will be made tonight. And with that, we'll open the, open the hearing. Mr. Shoretta. And I guess, I guess what, this is really a wrap-up meeting. We have had countless meetings. And lots of materials have been submitted and statements made. Not, not everything is altogether new on, on either side. And to the extent that, that people want to speak, I, I'd appreciate it if they spoke to something that's new and relevant. Mr. Shoretta.
Thank you Chairman Hoffman, members of the trustees, Lino Shoretta from Wilson Else on behalf of the applicant LDG Livingston Development Group, 19 Livingston. Just to echo what the chairman said, we are here tonight really, I guess, to wrap up a few things. The last meeting, I have requested on behalf of the applicant that we submit a letter which you received. My letter which really addressed the points that were raised at the meeting by both your board and the public. Specifically with respect to the AHRB's decision itself. As to excessive dissimilarity, excessive similarity, and really addressing the points of the AHRB's decision. So I'm not going to go through my entire letter, but again, to the extent that you have any questions this evening, we're here to answer them. Just to remind you, I know you've heard this before, but you know, we're here tonight really on an application that is 100% compliant with the zoning code of the Village of Dobbs Ferry. There's something to be said for that when we meet all the code requirements for height, coverage, FAR, setbacks, sky exposure plane. And we have 100% zoning compliant plan. In our letter, we did note for you, for the record, that there is law out there, and I know we talked about the law at the last meeting, that you cannot completely ignore the fact that LBG's site plan was approved unanimously by the planning board and the trustees. We understand you look at de novo, but you also, you can't, you cannot ignore those prior determinations. That said, you have my letter. We went through all the steps with respect to the AHRB's decision. We also submitted, for the record, a report by Michael Fox Appraisals. Michael Fox is here tonight. He will speak after me. And really, that appraisal report is really to refute the appraisal that was submitted or the report that was submitted by 12 Livingston, the residents of 12 Livingston and its corals. And in that report, you'll find that with respect to valuation and with respect to view, and that report, and it's very key to note, that report said there was a loss of value of the property because of the view. And I submit to you that any code with respect to excessive dissimilarity, there's no statement anyway by the applicant that they lost value because the property was excessively dissimilar. It's strictly about the view. And I submit to you with respect to the view, that issue has been long addressed by the planning board. It's within the purview of the planning board and not the AHRB.
Should be on.
Should be on?
Yeah, I think it's okay.
So just, just to state again, again, the view issue, this is not about view. I know there are a lot of concepts that are being muddled here, and we heard this at the last meeting, about view, about the value, the diminution of value. But again, the statute is very clear with respect to excessive dissimilarity and also similarity. It states that the development must be, quote, "so detrimental to the desirability of property values or development of the surrounding area consisting of any lot fronting on the same street within 200 feet of the proposed site." Okay, "as to provoke such harmful effects by excessive dissimilarity or inappropriateness in relation to any other structure existing or for which a permit has been issued, or to any other structure included in the same permit application." Now, I, I quote that because one of the interesting things in the AHRB decision that was not looked at was Livingston Ridge. If the AHRB in this decision looked at Livingston Ridge, which is less than 200 feet away and is fronting on the same street Livingston Avenue, you would see by law that our project, okay, is very, like I said, is, is in keeping with that motif, that theme of Livingston Ridge. And we also, by that same token, went through the design guidelines, which we also provided to you, and kept with the design guidelines with respect to our project. And Mr. Clark, who is here tonight, we could talk about that. But I really, the next step I really want to get into again is not so much going point by point in my letter, but I have Mr. Fox here and I want to talk about the appraisal report that he submitted. And he's here tonight just to give a brief summary to talk about that report. So, the box.
Before we do, could I ask you a question? When you talked about that the relevance of the planning board and, and Board of Trustees vote, in what specific ways are you saying that that is relevant for us? What, what, what portions of, of their, of their determination?
Well, I would say all of it because the, with the case that I cited in my, in my letter to you is a case that was just recently, I believe it was Suffolk County in 2014. A very recent case that says, "You cannot ignore," and I'll quote the language, "is that a board may act," and I quote from the case, "may act arbitrarily and capriciously if, in denying an appealed application, it completely ignores prior approvals obtained by the applicant before other municipal boards, which are part of the record before it." So our position is simply, the planning board unanimously recommended approval of this project to the trustees.
Is there anything you can point to in their approvals that address excessive similarity, excessive dissimilarity?
No, not.
Or in, in any other specific issue that's before us tonight?
You're right. With respect to excessive similarity and dissimilarity, the planning board and the trustee determination does not address those. You're absolutely correct. But what it did address was the view. The view has already been determined, so I submit to you, any discussion on view tonight or the effect on view on values, which I submit is not the standard, should really not be entertained.
Well, well, the case you cited doesn't say that if a prior board has addressed something, that means it's off the table for any consideration. Doesn't say that. It says, it says you have to take some account of something that deals with specifically the subject matter that's before another board.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
But, but you haven't, other than the view, is there anything in the prior decisions that you think should influence?
With respect to site plan approval, massing, bulk, the way the project is laid out, those are within the purview, I believe, of the planning board. And site plan has been approved. And with respect to those issues, such as CEFACs, height, whether rear side yard, rear yards, side yard, those issues, FAR, those issues are all within the purview of the planning board that I don't believe the, the AHRB can overturn.
But that's not, that's not what the case you submitted says. It doesn't say cannot be overturned, it said cannot be ignored. It should, should not, this case is really nothing like the case that you cited. That's a case where a, something had been pending for 10 years and then they changed the area. It was zoned in and, and there was a denial with no evidence cited whatsoever. So that's, I mean, what you're telling us is that if we make a decision with no evidence, we'll possibly run afoul of, of the law.
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's all I'm saying. We're not, I'm not disagreeing. I, I agree with you. With respect to the excessive dissimilarity, similarity, and also with respect to the design guidelines, those issues were not addressed by the planning board or the Board of Trustees.
Thank you.
Good evening. Michael Fox from Michael Fox Appraisal. So I was, I was hired by, by the client to review the appraisal submitted by Landmark Appraisals regarding the view, the effect of value on view from 12 Landmark, I mean 12, 12 Livingston Avenue, submitted, and the appraisal submitted by Landmark Appraisal. And my findings were, the, the report submitted by Landmark, every case, they, they went through these five different scenarios of how view affects value. And they also compared 12 Livingston to two other properties in Dobbs Ferry. And, and what they said was that these two properties and Livingston Avenue, the only difference, the major significant difference between the two is the view. And, you know, my, I can contend that that's, that's just, for one, that's not a process of appraising. You cannot take adjustments in isolation. I mean, you have to take them in isolation. You know, you have to list all the salient factors of each property against the subject property and adjust for them in, in isolation, each one. And then you come up with, you know, what the, what the adjustment should be. So there was no support for that evidence other than to say that everything being equal, the only difference between the, the two properties that they compared to 12 Livingston was the view. And in my report, I, I illustrate clearly that there was significant differences. I mean, there were many differences between Livingston and 12 Livingston and the two properties. For one, they chose two, Livingston, 12 Livingston is a raised ranch. And they chose two ranch-style properties with basements. Conditions were very different. Locations are very different. So there were, there were significant differences between the properties. And as an appraiser, sometimes if I'm doing a raised ranch, if there aren't any raised ranches sold in the timeframe, you know, the marketing timeframe, that would be reasonable for a, for an analysis, I would use a ranch. But there were other raised ranches that sold within the year, within the timeframe, the marketing timeframe. There were, there were six actually. So in my report, I, I used three. And after I analyzed the property, I, I couldn't come up with any value for the added view. At the time of 12 Livingston's sale, Rudy's Beauregard was built across the street. I would have considered that as an appraiser, an obstructed river view with distant river views. It's a nice amenity and I'm sure it, it helped in marketing, but after I put it on the grid, there was, there was no adjustment for it. So, and then they took, they, they, in their report, they said there was a 17 to, 15 to 19% difference in value between 12 Livingston and the comps that they chose. I, I can tell you from my experience, I've been present since 2002. I was a high-end contractor and I've also studied architecture. A 20% adjustment for a view is only, the only occasion that would ever be possible would be a, a place where there was a direct waterfront property that had completely unobstructed views. And it was the same exact house built a half a mile away with no views in the same development. I mean, you can't, I mean, that's just an extraordinarily high amount for any properties to be, for 20% adjustment for one single salient feature.
Well, forgetting about, forgetting about the specifics here, I guess I find it odd that you would say that there was no difference between the value and that the value was not enhanced at all by a partially obstructed river view. I mean, it would seem to me that a house with no view would be worth less than a house with a partial view would be let, worth less than a house with an unobstructed view. And I, I guess I would ask, why, why it wouldn't hold here?
It doesn't hold here, in my opinion, because 12 Livingston is on the eastern side of Livingston Avenue. Regardless of whether Beauregard was there or the new development or whatever, there's private property and a road that separates the property from the view. Who's to say whether it gets approved or not? Who's to say what, that, that private property at one time cannot be developed and would, would not be developed and obstruct a view? There may be, there may be a marginal difference. I think the, the, that particular property, not all views add value. I mean, it's, it adds marketing value. You may, you may sell it a little quicker if there were two properties, but I, you're not, in my opinion, that one did not, there was not an adjustment for you there.
Are you saying, I mean, we, we've been given a measurement of just under 150 feet for the width of the proposed front structure.
Right.
You, you agree with that?
I do. I think so. I think that's.
And, and you're saying, and, and that structure is much closer to the street than Rudy's Beauregard was? And, and do you know how, how, why Rudy's Beauregard was?
I believe it was 70 feet. But, but this is how, this is how I.
So you're saying that
This is as an appraiser.
A structure that's twice as wide and closer to the street and it has another structure behind it that's also just under 150 feet. You're saying that doesn't change the view?
The way, that, that particular property sits up on a hill. And the view is from the, the living room window is where you get the best view. And it sits up high enough where it's a distant river view and it will always be a distant river view unless they, they build above the 35 feet or whatever height it is. That will be there. You're going to still, still have partial river views to the left of the, the new development and to the right in between the, the two buildings.
Much, much more partial.
It's still, in my opinion, it's still an obstructed river view. I can't, I can't go into the minutia. This, this one, yes, is it more obstructed? Yes. It, it will be more obstructed.
And what, what about the view for someone walking down the street who's not high up on the hill across the street?
What about it?
Do, do you see any impact of this proposed structure?
There'll be, you know, but as you walk from, for one, Broadway is a very busy road right there. They're coming off of Broadway and you have the, the, the river view. You're still going to see from the left, the, the, the adult, the nursing home there. There's still going to be that wide swath of land as you're walking. So for, you know, as, as, as long as it takes you to get past the new development, you'll see the, the river views between the houses like you see right now.
Between, between what houses?
All of the houses on that street.
But, but you, but there's, you can't see between, this is one.
Right, but you do on either side. It's, it's wider. You're right. It's wider than, it's, it's going to be wider, but.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Why examine what it looked like when Rudy's was there? When our code asks us to examine what one property that might be developed there as opposed to another property that might be developed there? We're supposed to be looking at the, the similarity and what impact that has on property values, not what was built there before.
Well, I was asked to review the Landmark appraisal and, and Landmark looked at the, the effect on value, of view on value. And so when, when they bought the property in 2007, Rudy's was there. So I, you know, the, the effect on value from, from that time and, and then with the new development, in my opinion, it's still going to be an obstructed river view. And they will always have that distant sunset view. Nobody's taking that away. It's not.
Did you do any analysis of the proposed structures with the different configuration and what impact that might have on neighboring properties and their value?
Did I know?
Did Landmark?
No. They did, they, they did an overall, their report is, it's very difficult to follow, but they, they, they chose, they gave an overall opinion of what they think view would, the value of a view with these different scenarios that all kind of line up together. But as you take each scenario that they put out there, none of it's supported. None of it. They're just saying that this, these two properties are similar except for the view. And so the difference between the sale price is X percentage. And they all fall in between a, a percentage between 15 and 20%. And I've taken in my report, each one of those scenarios, lined them up next to one another, adjusted for the differences, and not one of them comes up higher than 10%. And the only one that's at 10% is in the landing. There's a property right on the river with an unobstructed river view and one at the beginning of the, of the complex that, that is the same model. And it's pretty much comparing an apple to an apple. So, you know, that's.
Mr. Fox, do you see, views aside, views aside, do you see or have you seen any type of negative impact on surrounding areas as a result of a development like this, of this size? Anything similar to that? Views aside?
No, I typically, you know, I, I live in Tarrytown and they're doing a lot of development on the river in Fleetdale and Tarrytown. And I know that the ones down by the river in Tarrytown are, are increasing the values. They're bringing in, you know, different buyers. I haven't seen no negative impact in Tarrytown. As far as this, you know, with Livingston Ridge, I looked into Livingston Ridge. What about before and after? And I couldn't find any negative, no reason why, what after, before and after Livingston Ridge was there? There was no, it didn't seem to, to affect value one way or the other. I think that.
In this particular area? I mean, I, if you're, if you're talking about Tarrytown down near the river and that very large new development, maybe it's not apples to apples. It was a, probably what would be considered a blighted area to some extent before they started that work. Then they just kind of kept going and going and it's an established neighborhood now. This, this area here on Livingston is an established neighborhood. And I'm wondering if in that case, it's, it doesn't have any type of impact.
Well, I mean, frankly, in my opinion, that the, the west, the west side of Livingston, if you look at the, the existing properties on the west side of Livingston, they're all either Colonials, Victorians, Queen Anne. They're all these very nice architecture and they're getting, they're getting rehabbed and they're, they're building up. On the opposite side, you know, you have, you know, raised ranches. They're, they're, they're a decent home, but they're not, they're not a, it's not a Victorian. You know, the properties on the, on the other side of the street, you know, are less in context to what is, is, in my opinion, nicer homes on the, on the one side of the street.
Okay, thank you.
Could I just ask? Do you recognize a difference in the massing of the plan for 19 Livingston and the massing of Livingston Ridge?
You know, I actually did a, I forget what the numbers are for the frontage, but the frontage of Livingston Ridge, with the openings on both sides, it's roughly 40% of the street funded, of the frontage is open on Livingston, on 19 Livingston. And on Livingston Ridge, only 30%, even with the center cut there. It's, it's less, there are, there's less street funded on the property at, at Livingston Ridge compared to 19 Livingston.
I'm not sure I understand that.
The opening, the open, the open frontage on 19 Livingston is about 40% of the frontage, the total frontage. On Livingston Ridge, it's about 30% of the open. So this, it's actually, even though there's, there's two, two masses on Livingston Ridge, there's less open land, open views from, from their road frontage, their street frontage.
And in your opinion, the separation at Livingston Ridge doesn't present a different look from 19, from, from the, the current proposal at 19?
I, I do not. I, in fact, I mean, if a buyer of 19, 12 or the house next to it, I mean, I don't, I just don't see how in any way that, that development would affect value negatively. In fact, I think it would increase it. You have a, you know, a, a high-end residential property. I, I was also asked to look at the, and, and give my opinion of the, the similarity and the similarity issue that was raised by, by the, the board. And I, you know, I submitted the notes here. You know, I just, you know, the, the, I guess the AHRB argued about the massing. You know, in my opinion, I studied architecture and I'm also, you know, an appraiser. I, I review codes for my work, you know, for highest and best use. And if anything, I just think that the, you know, the new development really follows, it follows the, the context of what's going on, on Livingston right now. Even the, the two houses next door that they're working on. I mean, you know, they're, they're fixing those two Victorians up on the right-hand side as you're looking at 19. Between those two and Livingston Ridge and the, and the subject, I, I mean, it's just, if, if anything, it's going to. What, in particular, did you want me to speak to? So, I mean, I can go through the bullet points if you want. Or, you know, the proposed 19 Livingston Avenue, Livingston Avenue development, you know, it's going to be a small residential enclave with the character of the development on, along Livingston Avenue. Currently, Livingston Avenue is a jumble of mixed uses from large nursing home campus at the south end to a small classic center hall colonial, single-family residence at the north end. In between these two dramatically different properties lies a varied housing stock, which includes a significant number of one to four family residences. At the center of the street, on the west side of Livingston, is Livingston Ridge condominium. Livingston Ridge is a 24-unit condominium completed in 2001. 19 Livingston is a 12-unit development. Six of the Livingston Ridge units face the street along 220 feet of street frontage.
Can I just ask, because I, I don't think, I, I think you're just reading from something that you've already submitted to us and we've read it. What, what I don't see mentioned in this is discussion of the massing, which is one of the particular criteria in the village code.
I did, I did address the massing here.
And we'll tell, if, you can point to where that is, but also I'm interested in how
Well, the massing, the way.
What, what you have to say about the similarity or dissimilarity of the overall massing in this.
The properties, particularly on the east side of the street. And when you, when you, when you take the street frontage of the properties on the east side. side...
Which is what?
Which is that 19 Livingston is on the east side of the street.
Right.
So if you take the properties and you take the street...
West side.
The west side, I'm sorry, it's on the west side. You take the properties, the frontage of all of the properties, I looked at all of them, and there is greater than 40 percent that's going to be, it's about 40 percent that's going to be open on the new development. Most properties are 30 or less. So they, you take your, your frontage and you take the mass of the building that's on that lot right there, and it's going to be 30 percent.
I, I don't think massing necessarily refers just to the relation of the structure to the size of the property.
Right, but it does, it...
Isn't there, I mean, what...
It does, it does in height, when you take the...
But, but could you address the difference between the massing of the proposed structure? Not in relation to the size of the property?
Sure, well, when you, when you look at, when you look at massing...
In relation to the massing of, the amount of building that meets the eye as you look from the street, compare, compare... Andrew, let me ask you something. Were you shown, there's a, there's some photographs that were, aerial photographs that were attached to a submission by Steve Tilly, have you seen that?
Yes, I've read it.
Is, is there anything about that representation that you think is inaccurate or that you disagree with?
That's the aerial.
You're talking about the letter submitted by Mr. Tilly, the most recent one, is that you're referring to?
Right, and there's a...
It's, it's this presentation, SK1.
The board is looking at this...
Right, right.
...document, and the concern about massing is if you look at the frontage across as to the street views, and if you look at the...
The dissimilarity.
The dissimilarity between the sizes, so...
Well, first of all, the massing of our building in the front is less than what is in Livingston Ridge. In fact, there was a comment, there was a comment made last meeting...
Is 76.5, is that less than 149.3?
Right, but you're looking at the total, you're looking at the total frontage. If you look at 76.5...
Well, it's a, we're not talking about frontage, the code talks about mass, you know, and, and size.
Right, and those two units together, when you're talking about size, you're talking about...
Do you want to compare those to your two units inside, together?
Right, that's actually larger, it's 12 percent larger in terms of the cubic mass.
What, what, what are you referring to that's larger?
The Livingston Ridge development is actually, there was a comment made, we noted in my letter, at the last meeting, okay, there was a comment made by the opponents of the project with respect to the massing, and the front building, and I'll read it right here, it says here, LDG's front building volume has a volume of 214,726 cubic feet. When combined, Livingston Ridge's two front buildings have a volume of 241,356 cubic feet.
But why should we combine them for purposes of comparison? They're not combined.
The code doesn't talk about combining structures.
Right.
It talks about looking at them in context.
Right, and when you're looking at it in context, we submit to you that our building is keeping in line with the, the context of Livingston Ridge. The fact that our building, yes, it's, it's a single, longer unified structure, is in keeping with the code with respect to this, your code allows me to keep that structure the way it is, with respect to...
We're not talking about the code, about the zoning code, we're talking about similarity or dissimilarity.
Right, but the massing, when you talk of massing and like the facade of a building, if it was one big block, yes, the massing would be, would not be in context, but there's, the, the architecture is designed in a way that it's, it's in and out, you know, so that when you look at it, as you travel down the street from it, you're going to see different planes. That's what they talk about with massing, the height is going to be no more, no higher than, and it's, it's code, which is, actually is it... The tall, the, the buildings next door are going to be taller, right? So, so, it, massing, when they speak about it in architecture, it's more what you're seeing, the masses that you see. This building is designed so that there's two masses on each end with a center axis. It's balanced and it's symmetrical, and that's what they're talking about with massing, though. They don't, if it was one big rectangular cube, yes, there would be a problem.
So you're saying as long as it's not...
It's stylistic.
As long as it's not a rectangular cube, the fact that the 150 uninterrupted feet doesn't, doesn't...
Just because it's warm, uninterrupted...
Doesn't make it look different than other things on the side.
It is actually interrupted, though, because it pulls in and out, and it also, there's, there's different heights, so it...
It's, it's, when you say interrupted, it's not interrupted by grass and space and...
By space, by open spaces, right, right.
Sky views or anything.
Right, but that's when in architecture, when you speak about massing, though, that's what they're talking about, is they're talking about the shapes and the forms, how you visually perceive it. They're not talking about, you know, it's really, it's, if you dropped a big block there that size, yes, it would be, it would not be in context with the neighborhood. But when you look at the other properties that are there, it's certainly, the massing is, is equal to or...
Which building is it equal to?
Well, to Livingston Ridge, it's actually, it's equal to all...
Which building is Livingston Ridge is it equal to?
It's equal to all of them. The, the massing, it's not, I think...
You're saying a 150-foot building is equal to a 76-foot building?
It is, yes. I'm saying it is not, it is in context because of the design, not, it's, it's not one long strip of flat wall.
I think we're talking about actually two different things, this, this idea of massing, right? You're talking about from an architectural point of view, from a stylistic point of view, a building amongst itself, there is a certain level of massing, I mean, there's a certain, you have, it's about arranging architectural components within a facade, that's massing, right? I think what we're talking about, or what's being asked here, is this, about this idea of the massing of a neighborhood, the massing of a streetscape, right? The ebb and flow of different sized buildings, heights, widths, and the rhythm that is created by a mass of an entire building relative to void, relative to space around that building, right? So I just wanted to try to add a little clarity to the conversation, because I think that's maybe where...
Right, and my point is that architecturally, the mass, the massing is, is fine, and the, the, the mass in proportion to the site is certainly within reason, just, just as is any other property on the street.
Right, okay. So your argument is, I'm not saying I agree with you or disagree, but your argument is that from a massing, from an architectural massing point of view, 19 Livingston is not anomalous in any way, it fits in with every other building, every other house, because each, each of these houses, many of them historical, Livingston Ridge not, have a certain level of, they have, they have a, an appealing massing, right?
A proportion to their, to their site.
Certain proportion, they've been put together in a nice way, makes you look at a house sometimes, and you say, my God, that's a nice house, I don't exactly know what it is about it, but it's very nice, and then you get people who know better, architects who say, this is exactly why, and they start to talk about gables and ranches, et cetera, et cetera.
And just... I'm sorry, could I just ask, because, you know, the, the code section that we're looking at on dis, excessive dissimilarity suggests one or more of the following features should be considered, or could be a basis for a disapproval. There's the massing, the cubical content, the gross floor area, those are just three. Could you, so you've talked about massing, which in your view is equal to other structures on, on the street. What about the cubical content and the gross floor area?
I didn't personally look into that, you know, I don't, I don't think that's, you know, it's not out of, in my opinion, the building itself is not out of proportion, it's not an odd, you know, shape or, or, you know, the layout is, is a modern layout and...
But going back to your client trade, I mean, you assess the value of property in any given context.
Correct.
Certainly introducing something new into any given context can have a material effect on the value of homes around, in that context. Fair enough, right?
Sure.
So I think what is being asked, I think the question here is, by introducing something that has a very different, it's not a very different massing on an architectural level, has a very different cubical content or bulk of building, does, can that have a detrimental effect on, on the, on the, in the context, can it have detrimental effect on the building, surrounding building?
It could in certain situations, sure.
Just your opinion that on an architectural massing level and on a bulk of building level, you don't see a detrimental effect?
No, not with this, this project, especially with Livingston Ridge, I mean, because Livingston Ridge is, goes, you know, I've been in Livingston Ridge, you know, it goes down to the river there, that's, that's quite a, a massive building.
Right, but it's, but it's, but it's a type of thing that you don't feel from, you don't feel that from this street, you don't feel that in this, in this area.
Livingston, though, isn't it really just, not just, but a good portion of Livingston is access to the train?
No, I, in my, I don't, I think a lot of people would say it is the gateway to our downtown. I walk Livingston every single day, so for me, it is, it is my way to the, to the train, but it, it's an intimate experience to some extent.
No, but there aren't any, there's no, nobody gathers there or, or lingers at the, at that, on that street for, you know, there isn't a park there or...
I don't think that, I think people, I think people gather...
If you want to see the river, my point is, if you want to see the river, you would go down to the river.
I'm not so sure of that, I'm not, I'm not, I don't know, I mean, I don't, I, again, I walk the street quite a bit, I see people hanging out on the street all the time. So, any, no more, no less than my street, and I don't live on that street. So, you know, people come out, they walk around, they say hi, they look around, you know, they experience that, their atmosphere. Hopefully they like it, they bought a house there, right, so...
Yeah, can I just, yeah, before we lose sight, I mean, again, the criteria here, and I said earlier this evening, is it's got to be so detrimental, okay, to the desirability and property values, okay, and that's so detrimental, not it may, I mean, we're all in agreement, and please correct everyone, that the project complies with zoning, we all, we all agree with that, unless it's a disagreement, but I understand that we're all compliant with zoning. This is about excessive dissimilarity that makes this so detrimental. With respect to this project, you talk about, we'll go back to view, even though I submitted view is not an issue tonight, but our site plan approval already has a viewing platform with respect to this project. So to address your concern, yes, people can walk up in Delamie's and stop at our viewing platform to admire the river, so that's part of it. When you look at the design guidelines too, okay, talk about the facades, I mean, we, we, and I submitted this as part of my submission, when you look at the facades, the design guidelines specifically talk about modulation, okay, of the vertical and horizontal elements. Design treatment of sides and rear proposed buildings should be substantially consistent in appearance of quality materials, okay? And if you look at unfortunate design guidelines for the Village of Delamie's, right, I'll page numbers, but if I could just show you, I mean, this is basically what we're talking about, and what we evaluate. Not, not to lose sight of this, but, you know, this is something where we're proposing a project that is, we spent a lot of time designing it architecturally, and, you know, we talk, now we're talking about feel and, and concepts, you know, as an applicant, we have to have some degree of objectivity, saying if we go before board with respect to these types of setback requirements, these types of height requirements as to bulk, there is a type of objectivity that we're, we have an expectation that, okay, if we do it and follow it within the parameters of the code, that we'd have an approval. You know, here with respect to this excessive dissimilarity and similarity, you know, if it's, it's got to be so detrimental, if we were putting something on there that was completely modern, that, that was all black glass and a square cube, okay, I could see that, yes, there'd be some concern, but what we're doing here, we're taking the elements of the design guidelines, and we went through them in my letter, I'm not going to go through it, but it's in there. We talked about, okay, street proportion, and, you know, one of the things I know Tilly's letter mentions is about, he gets the concept, or the, the concept wrong, it's really about the relationship between the height of buildings on each side of the street and the width of space between those buildings. When you look at our project and the two structures that are next to it, 29 Livingston, I believe, is 45 feet away, yeah, 45 and change. The nearest structure after that is Cabrini, which is over 350 feet, I believe, away. So with respect to even the street proportion, when you look at our, even just the front building, because the rear, you're not going to see, the front building itself, we need even the street proportion guidelines of that criteria, of the design guidelines. We actually are positioning the building away from 29 and we're way far from Cabrini. So we comply with that. And then the next part of the design guidelines are the hillside construction. And again, in my letter, we went through how we, looking at the guidelines, comply with that. So there are objective criteria in the design guidelines, which the car who painstakingly went through, and we were at many meetings where we addressed these issues. So I go back, does this project, is it so detrimental to property values? It's not about one property value of one home, okay? It's about the neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood, you heard tonight, and there's nothing in the record that says, nothing submitted where the entire neighborhood and the property values are going to diminish because of this. I submit to you with respect to Livingston Ridge, property values did not diminish. In fact, as I heard tonight from Mr. Fox, they probably increased, okay? Same thing with our project, the expectation of, of our project, we have a, we had a commercial business before, there was a catering hall there, that was, you know, before we bought it. We tore down the site, our clients tore down the site because it was a public nuisance. And in its, in its place, we put in this residential structure, okay, that's not a commercial catering hall, that's going to have traffic, because Rudy's at one point, which I may have mentioned, but was approved by your board, by not this board, by the planning board, okay? Much larger than what we have now, and this was approved. So again, just to submit it to you, just to see the scale, the magnitude of what was there, what was approved to be there. Also, what was reminded to me, the code says it has to be more likely than not by preponderance of the evidence, okay, that property values in the neighborhood are going to diminish, okay? And I submit to you, there's nothing in this record that shows that. Now, the other comment, again, I'll be brief, with respect to the similarity, excessive similarity, the code talks about excessive dissimilarity with ourselves, within the project itself. And just by way of background, excessive similarity provisions, they're designed to avoid endless blocks of almost identical houses. That's what excessive similarity is designed to do, okay? This is because of the concept of excessive row houses that have no modulation, no uniformity. That's what excessive similarity refers to, we don't have that here, okay? LDG's proposed rear structure will hardly be seen from the street, and any similarity in the two structures are not going to be so detrimental to the property values and development of the surrounding area. So, I already talked about street...
Doesn't the front structure have a repetitive motif?
Right, but it's, excessive similarity is between the two structures themselves, you're looking at comparison within the project itself. But there is a motif on, with respect to the front structure. And it's a motif that is, again, when you go back to now excessive dissimilarity, we follow the guidelines with respect to facades, and I just showed you that. And we did exactly what those guidelines said to do. And just a little point, excessive similarity is not, it's within, not within other structures, but within the project itself.
Well, it could be, it could be either one, but in this case, what the ARHB referred to was on, on this one side.
Just, I mean, it was pointed out too by the client that there are two turrets in the front structure, nothing in the middle. So you can't say that with respect to, there is, there is a... So, you can't say that with respect to, there is, there is a slight difference, okay? But when you're looking at the excessive dissimilarity, you're looking at the dissimilarity with respect to their neighborhood. When you're looking at excessive similarity, it's within, is it too similar to itself? Are there row houses? And we don't have that situation here. We actually specifically, with the planning board request that we put a turret up. And we did put a turret on each side, is that correct? On either side, on both the north and the south side, we have turrets there, that were a specific design request by the planning board.
Are you done for now?
For now, we are.
Mr. Potenski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Keith Potenski, on behalf of Annalisa Corrales and Jonathan Brozi. Ms. Corrales is de novo resides at 12 Livingston, and Mr. Brozi resides at 152 Broadway, which is the intersection of Broadway and Livingston Avenue. Tonight, we'll demonstrate why, based on the facts, Livingston Development Group's application before the zoning board should be denied. Our architect, Mr. Stephen Tilly, will present irrefutable data, and Mr. Brozi and Ms. Corrales will explain why they believe the proposal would impact their properties, which plays an important role in the excessive similarity and dissimilarity analysis. After all the facts are presented, I respectfully submit that you will find that this is not a close call. The two proposed structures are, simply put, so much larger than the homes in the surrounding neighborhood that this application must be denied. At the last zoning board hearing on December 10th, 2014, several members of the zoning board acknowledged that based on the objective criteria in the code, two proposed six-unit residential structures at 19 Livingston were substantially larger than the other homes in the immediate vicinity. And I believe one of the members actually had paced off one of those structures. An independent board of experts, known as the Architectural and Historic Review Board, unanimously found in a well-reasoned four-page decision in this case that the proposed structures at 19 Livingston are excessively similar to themselves and dissimilar to the surrounding properties, and in violation or contrary to the residential design guidelines. And tonight, we'll prove that to preponderance of the evidence, which is the applicable legal standard supports that decision. Subsequent to the last meeting, based on the assumption that the matter would be on the January agenda, Mr. Steve Tilly, a licensed architect, submitted a detailed analysis explaining how, based on the objective criteria in the code, the proposed structures are excessively dissimilar to the other homes within 200 feet of 19 Livingston. LDG does not and cannot dispute the raw data in Mr. Tilly's report. Specifically, Mr. Tilly, his report states the following, and, and I'll let Mr. Tilly go through his report and answer any questions that the board might have, but I think this is one of the most relevant provisions. The average frontage dimension of the properties, and he's referring to the properties within 200 feet of 19 Livingston, is 43.39 feet. The average frontage dimension of the properties intersected by the 200-foot radius is 40.93 feet. These dimensions are to be compared for purposes of similarity or dissimilarity to 149 feet 10 inches for the proposed front building, and 146 feet 7 inches for the proposed western or rear building. The eastern front building facing Livingston Avenue has a frontage which is 366% of the average of the buildings fronting on Livingston and within 200 feet. The frontage is 345% of the average frontage of all buildings on Livingston, shown on the drawing attached to Mr. Tilly's report. It should be further noted that the proposed front building is a mere 20 feet from the sidewalk, such that it will appear, it will appear as towering, a towering nearly 150-foot long continuous wall, flanked by a similarly sized building located just a short distance behind it. And according to the applicant's visuals that were previously submitted, that rear building will be visible from Livingston Avenue. Again, these facts cannot be disputed. Rather than argue the facts, the applicant uses smoke and mirrors and claims that the code is ambiguous. It is not. The code clearly sets forth objective criteria by which excessive similarity and dissimilarity may be judged. While the grammar may be somewhat arcane, the criteria are clearly spelled out. The applicant also argues that the ZBA should take into account the St. Cabrini Nursing Home, the former Rudy's Beau Rivage, and Livingston Ridge. St. Cabrini can't be considered because it's in a different zoning district. Rudy's was a historic, pre-existing, non-conforming structure, and any subsequent expansion would have required a new experiment. Livingston Ridge is a multifamily housing complex on the outer fringes of the 200-foot radius, and would not be permitted in the MDR-1 district today. It predates that zoning change in 2011. Only one to three family homes are permitted in the, in the MDR-1 zoning district. LDG Livingston Development Group has chosen instead to propose two six-family buildings, which is akin to trying to fit, fit a square peg into a round hole. As far as the appraisal report is concerned, we submitted two appraisal reports, one for Ms. Corrales's property, one for Mr. Brozi's property. Those reports are in the record. I'm not going to go through them point by point. I will note that while the applicant's appraisal report refutes Ms. Corrales's appraisal, it doesn't refute Mr. Brozi's appraisal. And we maintain that the appraisal reports that were submitted by my clients are entirely To a certain extent, these appraisal reports are subjective, there may be a difference of opinion. I think common sense and logic dictate that the massing of a structure directly in front of a home is going to have some impact on that. It's debatable as to what that impact is, but we've submitted information in the record that we believe is accurate. Respectfully, the appropriate analysis here is the impact of the proposed development on one to three family residences, such as Ms. Corrales and Mr. Brozi's residence. The applicant makes certain points in their February 4th letter which do warrant a brief response. The applicant argues, for example, that the zoning board cannot consider buildings on the same lot when determining excessive similarity. The code expressly states otherwise. The applicant states that if you combine the Livingston Ridge buildings together, they're similar to the proposed buildings at 19 Livingston. This analysis is obviously flawed because of the fact that the Livingston Ridge buildings are in fact separate. They're not combined. Moreover, the analysis, moreover, an apples-to-apples analysis would require that the proposed buildings at 19 Livingston be combined as well, in which case they would be far larger than the two combined buildings on Livingston Ridge, in Livingston Ridge fronting on Livingston Avenue. Also, only one of the Livingston Ridge buildings fronting on Livingston is actually within 200 feet of 19 Livingston, and therefore, the second building arguably should not be considered. The applicant argues that the appraisal reports for Ms. Corrales and Mr. Brozi's residences are not timely, that they weren't properly submitted to the HRB, because this board is sitting de novo, and the reports are in the record. I respectfully submit that that argument is moot. In conclusion, the proposed project in 19 Livingston is really in its infancy. No shovel has been put in the ground. The Village Board approved the site plan subject to a review by the Architectural and Historic Review Board. That, that approval was expressly conditioned on the applicant obtaining HRB approval, which to date, they have not. There are presumably alternative configurations that the applicant could consider, which would yield perhaps the same number of dwelling units without running afoul of the zoning code. In this case, based on the testimony at the last meeting, the evidence in the HRB record and Mr. Tilly's December 30th, 2014 letter, the preponderance of the evidence supports the HRB's decision that the proposed buildings at 19 Livingston are excessively similar to each other and excessively dissimilar to the surrounding structures within 200 feet. In addition, the HRB also rested its decision on the residential design guidelines, which Mr. Tilly will touch on briefly this evening, and for those reasons, respectfully, we ask the board to deny the application before it. Steve?
No, no, it's, it's their turn now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, you, you, you can correct, you can correct it at the proper times.
Steve, if you wouldn't mind?
Thank you, Steve Tilly, 22 Elm Street. And this is not a...
You're taller than I am.
This is not a happy situation, and I don't want to extend everyone's evening any longer than it has to. You've seen my, the exhibit that I've prepared, and it really was in response to the line of reasoning that you established at the last meeting, which I thought was on the right track, looking at the relative lengths of the buildings. The, I think that the, the frontage, the reason I fastened up that, picked up on that line of questioning was that I think it is an index of all those other factors that were cited in the code. Because of the general height limitations and because of the general layout considerations in establishing a building, frontage is a, is really a pretty good index of massing, of massing in the, in the sense of just cubical content, of bulk, of gross floor area, and cubical content, as referenced in that code section. So that, and, and Keith went through the, you know, the kind of scale relationships in the frontage between the average and also between the lesser frontages and the, and the longer frontage that you can see on the diagram. And I've had a little bit of feedback that perhaps my frontage is little, are slightly overstated, so that it may be that those relationships are really more asymmetrical. And the, I think Keith also referred to the, the kind of statement of the provision in, in the submission by the applicant that compared the two Livingston Ridge buildings to the single building, and obviously, the, a single Livingston Ridge building is 120,000, excepting their cubical contents, which I think is probably pretty accurate. 120,000, so the proposed buildings' cubical contents are actually 177% of the, of that largest Livingston Ridge building on, on Livingston. So, I think it's a, you know, it's a, a kind of funny gambit to try to combine it to. If you look at 12 Livingston across the street, it has, by my estimate, something like 19,000 and change in cubical feet. So, that means it's less than a tenth the volume of the proposed building across the street. I would also point out that with respect to distant views, the ridge heights on the new proposed building vary from 142.5 to 139.5, and the ridge height of, of the 12 Livingston, for example, is 140. So, you can imagine that you're not going to be looking over the building. The ridge height of your building is less than the ridge height of the building across the street. So, your picture window is looking at the building. So, just to be factually clear about that relationship. Those numbers come off of the applicant's drawings. In the residential design guidelines, which are listed as, the applicant pointed out, among the criteria that the HRB is to consider in reviewing applications. The code lists, under contextual design, the guidelines refer to building mass as follows. "The mass and shape of new buildings should step back and down to provide a transition on sites that are next to or across the street from existing buildings that are lower in scale." In other words, the, the concept was that if there's a, you know, kind of a new building coming in, you kind of make, you know, you kind of make nice. You, you arrange the shape and the, and you, and the scale so that there's not an abrupt transition from one part of the neighborhood to the other. And this is actually common in other, in other zoning codes to have this kind of transition. The emphasis on this additional reference criterion on scale and dimensional aspects of context only reinforces the code provisions for the dimensional, as opposed to stylistic aspects of proposed projects. So, in other words, as much as we like design style, as much as we like the massing style, you know, the kind of way of manipulating stuff architecturally, style alone cannot overcome basic scale discrepancies in creating this kind of dissimilarity, this disjunction in, between new and old. Again, like, you know, Keith, I believe that there are other options out there that probably would mean breaking down, creating the same number of units, breaking down the, the building into, into parts that would, maybe not everybody would be happy with, but that I believe would satisfy the code's requirements, and also my hunches would speed through to approval and construction. So, you know, I'd rather be here trying to think about how those kinds of plans could be modified than, you know, I'm not a forensic architect, I'm somebody who likes to do stuff, and I'm sympathetic to the applicant. But I think that by breaking down that mass, it could achieve the greater subtlety in responding to topography that the ARB talked about in its findings, and also avoid this kind of set of disjunctive relationships that have resulted from this long building. So, with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them or...
Good evening, Chairman Hoffman and members of the board. I thank you, as always, for the time and the patience that you have with these issues. I know we're here a long time. And I do want to reiterate, and I know I've said this before, but I'd like to cite to the code provision as well, that the code 300-18B1 says that the Architectural and Historic Review Board shall approve or deny a permit for building or structure in accordance with the expertise and judgment of its members, who shall be guided, not may be guided, shall be guided, in their decision by, and among other things, the residential design guidelines. But I want to point out, consistency with the Vision Plan and the Local Waterfront Revitalization Plan, the LWRP. Those two documents specifically point out 19 Livingston as a historic resource that, should it ever be developed, should be thought of for public use. And the LWRP specifically calls that site out as a place of dynamic Hudson River views. So, we're not talking about just any spot in the village, we're talking about one that's been specifically identified, and we cannot forget that. It's very important, because that requires that we really look carefully at these criteria. The HRB found on five separate grounds that it was, that this application should be denied. You only need to find that you agree with one of those grounds to deny the application tonight. And the standard, as my attorney mentioned, is the preponderance of the evidence, which I understand... I understand to be, and I'm not a land use lawyer, but I am a lawyer, and I have some understanding of these things, is if you find the scales tipped slightly over 50% towards excessive similarity or excessive dissimilarity, then that's, you've reached the preponderance of the evidence standard. And the attorney for the applicant has not exactly quoted all of the language from that standard, which is that it would be so detrimental to the desirability, property values, or development of the surrounding areas. And that includes any lot within 200 feet. So you could have a lot, even if the building on the lot is not within 200 feet, you can include Mr. Rudy's residence as well as mine. His appraisal is uncontested, by the way. My appraisal was something that I think gives you a basis for, for, for finding that the value has been impacted. But even if you find that there are problems with some of the comps, whatever you find, I think you have to immediately discredit the Fox appraisal when it says that there is no quantitative value attributed to 12 Livingston for the view at the time it was purchased. And I think you further can discredit the report, which says that not only is my value not helped by a massing that permits a view, but it's, it's, it's helped by this proposed structure, which is so great in bulk and massing, as to 100% cut off my view. And I don't think that Mr. Fox understands what the view was before, when I purchased, nor what it will be after this building is built. He, he simply doesn't understand it. And I, I prepared some slides just to, to better illustrate my view of, of this. And by the way, before I get into that, this is not just about my home. This is not just about my residence. This is about the entire community that enjoys the southern gateway to our village. It's a river town. It's the first place, when you're coming from Broadway from the south, that you see the Hudson River. And yes, I understand they want to say this is not about views, it's about massing, but a view being cut off is a symptom of the massing being so disproportionate and so excessively dissimilar to its surroundings, that you have to take that into account. I just want to point out, if you're standing on the street on Livingston Avenue, the total impression will be much wider than frontage of 150 feet, because the back building, or the one to the west, juts out to the north, and therefore, the, the impression from the street will be far wider than 150 feet. So I submit to you that, that it's even more dissimilar to a person walking by than you might get from just looking at measurements. And if you were to look at it from the intersection of Broadway and Livingston, you would also see the second building. So you have to take both into account. They try to point in their papers only to the front building, but that's, that's an error in, in reasoning. Also, the majority of these structures are standalone residences. And even if you take Livingston Ridge into account, which by the way, the AHRB is permitted in the code to omit buildings from the calculations that it determines are an anomaly within the context limit area. So it was well within its right to do so. However, you don't have to consider it an anomaly. You can consider it, if you would like, in your decision. And if you do, 76 feet wide for each building is a far cry from the, the frontage that we're talking about. Oh, well, Rudy's was, um, thank you. Rudy's was 78 feet wide. The impression from my home and from the street and from all of our neighbors was certainly that you could see on each side of it, because of the way that they, I'm sorry, am I near way? Okay. You could see that, the river from both sides. And these are from Mr. Tilly's submissions, you have all of this in your record. But I just wanted to reiterate that both the east side and the west side of the street have standalone residences. You cannot say that the proposed structure is more similar to everything on the west side of the street, it just doesn't make sense. These are more of, of the photos from Mr. Tilly's submission. You can see Livingston Ridge. It, the, it's actually, the impression of it, I think, will be far different from the impression we'll have when 19 Livingston is built. I have yet to see a rendering from the street in front of my house of what 19 Livingston will look like. But I can tell you, when I bought the house, from my front porch, this is not even from the picture window at the top level, this is from the bottom level, you can see the river to the left and to the right. I consider it quite beautiful, and the colonial home effect of Rudy's, which was a historic site, was not detrimental to my value. In fact, that river view was a huge selling point for me. Even my seven-year-old son this morning said, "Mommy, why do you have to keep going to these meetings and you can't tuck me in?" And he was very upset that I told him I was going to this tonight. And he said, I told him what it's about, and he said, "Mommy, would you have paid less for this house if it didn't have the view?" Even a seven-year-old gets that there's a value to the view. I don't know what the Fox report is talking about. But it's common sense. It's childlike common sense. And from the ground floor inside my home, you can see the river even. When 19 Livingston goes up, you will see none of that, because the massing is so great. This is from the top floor. At the time I bought the home, we've actually replaced those windows now, so there's no break in the view of the river. And you can see, there's a beautiful view of, of the river all the way across. We used to even have, we have a, a view of the Palisades as well to the left, but that will be cut off, because the Livingston, the 19 Livingston structure is planned to go almost entirely to the property line, to the left. This is, again, is with Rudy's in place, fully intact. Beautiful river views. I don't care if you think they're obstructed, there's a value to that. And we can see the reflection of the sunset onto the river, we'll no longer see that once 19 Livingston is built. This was an approximation in one of our earlier papers of just what will be cut off. I really have yet to see a rendering of how it will look, and I would, I would love to see that, I would welcome that from the developer, to show me what will it look like after it's built. But that's just our, our best guess, which is zero river. And there was a rendering they showed of looking from the river up, and there's a picture, it's in the records somewhere, and all you can see is the very, very top of my roof. So you certainly won't see the river from my home after it's built. And this is a, one of their renderings from the, I believe from about the intersection of Broadway and Livingston. So you can see that back building, which is the point that I was making earlier. My home is 28 feet wide. That's one-fifth of the width of their front building. I also can say on behalf of my neighbors to the left and to the right, whom I've spoken to, but who didn't have the resources to pay for an appraiser, that they feel exactly the same way, and they're very concerned about their value. And they completely agree that there's a value to being able to see the river around whatever structure is put up. There needs to be some kind of break in the massing. They could turn it the other way, so that it's narrow but deep. And, and if, if their appraiser is right, those front and middle units that don't have a river view will not be impacted in value anyway. So they certainly could try that. They should try something creative here. They've been asked by the AHRB multiple times, multiple times, to change their plan so that it fits the site, to look at the site, build it into the site, but they keep coming up with the same thing persistently. And if you grant their application to overturn the HRB decision, you take away a huge resource, not from just me, from the entire community, and you do something very detrimental to the future of development in Dobbs Ferry. I don't care if you agree with the property value appraisal or not. One of the criteria, there are three, desirability, property value, or, and there's an or there, development. And, and I think there's a detriment to all three. But if you grant our side an affirmance of the HRB decision, all that happens, it's not a permanent impact, all that happens is they have to modify their design, that's all they have to do. They can still realize value from this property. So there's a very detrimental effect from going one way in, in your decision, and, and a not-so-permanent impact from going the other way. And I would submit to you that that's the right way to go. I would also just say that our appraiser was, is very well qualified, has been doing this since the seventies, has been qualified as an expert witness in state and federal court. Their appraiser conceded that at least one of the comps was accurate, where, most things being equal, the view accounted for a $200,000 difference in the sale price at the landing in the same year, 2013. Two units, one with a view. Granted, they said one of those was unobstructed, but again, there's absolutely not a, not a single piece of evidence he was able to offer to say that a partially obstructed view has zero value. He didn't offer one bit of evidence for that. So I think you should discredit the entire thing. That's all I have, I'm sorry I've gone on way too long, but thank you for listening.
Good evening, John Brozzi, I live at 152 Broadway. And like Aunt Elisa, I thank you for your service and thanks for hearing us out tonight. I reiterate what she said on that front. I want to make, I want to make a couple of legal-type points, I guess, although I probably shouldn't, but I can't help myself, you know, because I, I am a lawyer, although not this type of a lawyer. But, and then I'm, then I'm going to give what I think is just sort of, again, as I did last time, sort of a layman's perspective, and kind of a sense of the neighborhood to me, and, and why this structure would be undesirable, you know, as far as my, my value is concerned. First point is, I think my appraisal should be considered. I, it's a lot, my, you know, my lot goes down to Broadway, it goes down to the intersection of Broadway and Livingston. If you look up, you know, you just look in the dictionary, the verb tense of the word front is fronting, it means facing. It doesn't mean my address has to be on Livingston, it just means facing. My lot is right there at the intersection. You know, where does Livingston begin and, and Broadway end? I mean, who knows? That's a very, sort of, you know, angels dancing on the head of a pin type thing. But my, you know, I definitely front Livingston, I'm right there, I'm directly impacted by this site. So I think my appraisal should be considered. It's uncontested in the record. Again, you know, the Fox, the Fox appraisal only contested 12 Livingston. And I, I hate to pile on poor Mr. Fox here tonight, but, you know, when I read that report, and, and it said that there was no value ascribed to a view, you know, you know what it reminded me of? It reminded me of how like Saddam Hussein and like Kim Jong Il and all those horrific dictators say, "Oh, I got 100% of the vote in the last election." I mean, it's just, it's not credible on its face. We could argue about whether it's 5%, 10%, 20%, whatever, but to say no value, I mean, I, I just think that's kind of ridiculous. You guys already picked up on that, so I don't want to belabor it. But, you know, even a 5% impact to me, I mean, my house costs. I hate to divulge this, but I want to, because it's on the record, my mom taught me not to do things like this, but it's a $1.25 million house. So 5%, 10% impact is a massive impact to me. And I invested a substantial amount, my net worth, into that home. So, but I want to get away, I want to get away, we talked all night about appraisals and legalisms. What I really want to talk about is, you know, we have to be, I know you guys have to base things on the law, but this is a village board, it's not, it's not a court. And I think you can apply the code in sort of a common sense, practical, everyday way. And to me, the best way to get a sense of that is to sort of view it from, you know, a homebuyer in the neighborhood, or somebody who walks up and down that street every day, as I do, I know Mr. Mass said he does too. I walk on that street every single day to the train. And I was, I was walking down it tonight, you know, this morning and tonight, I was really paying attention, because I knew this, you know, I knew this hearing was going to be tonight. I'm looking around, and I see the sort of quirky buildings there, and, and the, you know, there are one, two, three family homes, and, and there's sort of a feel to the neighborhood. Even Livingston Ridge, you know, which is surrounded by these other types of structures, sort of blends in, you know, kind of to the neighborhood. I mean, it's, it's separated, there's a reason it's separated, so it won't be one single block of wall, you know, when, when you walk down the street. The separation's only 10, 15 feet, but it's still a separation. And I tried to imagine, I tried to imagine, you know, this 19 Livingston proposal in that neighborhood on that particular site. And I got to tell you, I, I couldn't imagine it. It was almost beyond my imagination, because it, it just doesn't fit. And ultimately, that's what this, these code provisions are about, just in a common sense way. Does this fit into the neighborhood or not? It, it doesn't. And I think, you know, it, it just, it just really doesn't. I think it's hard, I think it'd be hard to walk up and down that street every day like I do, and say that something to that size, I mean, if you look at their own lawyer's submission, you know, two, even the two Livingston Ridge projects put together, 241,000 feet, cubic feet. The, the combined 19 Livingston proposal, 503,000 cubic feet, means twice the size. So, and, and to say that doesn't impact, I mean, you know, it's also about reasonable expectations. When I bought my home, you know, I had every reason to look at that site and to look at the code. I knew something was going to be built there, I knew, you know, I knew Rudy's wasn't going to be there forever, but I knew something was going to be built there. When I imagined what would go there, I imagined something, you know, more along the lines of what Mr. Tilly was talking about tonight. I didn't imagine 150-foot block there. And I think that's important, because when people, when people are buying properties, investing significant amounts of money, they, like the applicant, also need to be able to rely on the code. And when I look at the Vision Plan, what it says about it, the LWRP says about that spot, and then when I look at the criteria which the AHRB has to apply, excessive dissimilarity, massing, all these things, I, I just submit to you that it really would be beyond anyone's reasonable expectation, who was going to buy a home in, in that area, that something, that the village would really allow something like this to be built. I, I just don't, I don't think that's reasonable. And I, I think when you think about it from that perspective, again, putting aside all the, the legalisms and the appraisals, and you just sort of think about a common sense like that, I, I think this is an easy call, I really do. But it's obviously your decision, so I'm going to ask you to please uphold the AHRB's decision tonight. I think that'd be the right thing, again, not just for me, but for the village as a whole. Thank you very much.
Is, is there anyone else who would like to be, be heard? And for, not that you're disinterested parties, but parties not directly affected, if you have something to say, please, please, please make it brief, or make it new, or both.
Mr. Chairman, members, Neil Whitehouse, 26 Hatch Terrace. This evening, I'm here as an asset appraisal expert to briefly comment on the landmark and Fox appraisals. I have a hard copy markup of the appraisals for the members, if you would like to, to have that. First, I offer my credentials. I am a credentialed appraiser of high value, high-value, long-lived assets, being certified by the International Society of Transport Aircraft Training, known as ISTAF, as a senior appraiser, one of 13 in the world. I've served as a member of the ISTAF International Board of Governors, and in that role have graded appraisal examinations. In terms of my industry stature, in 1999, I was made a fellow of the Royal Aeronautical Society, at its highest rank. I have over two decades of experience as a litigation expert, and have qualified as an asset valuation expert in state and federal courts and international tribunals.
Are you purporting to be a, an expert witness?
I'm, I'm offering my expertise.
Do these buildings fly?
Sorry?
Do these buildings fly?
I'm offering my expertise not as a real estate expert per se, sir, but as an expert in, in, in asset, in long-lived asset valuation. Let me just get, if I may, I've reviewed both the landmark...
Sir, you're on the clock. You've got two minutes.
I've reviewed both the landmark appraisal of 12 Livingston and the Fox appraisal. I found the landmark appraisal to be complete, well-formulated, and having documentation of comparable properties with analysis that substantiated the appraiser's opinion that the view of the Hudson River, albeit a partially obstructed view, adds value to the subject property, and the loss of that view would consequently result in a loss of value. I have two basic areas of concern with the Fox appraisal. The first, the Fox appraisal, it's basic value proposition. Every asset appraiser has either explicitly or implicitly a basic value proposition. The Fox basic value proposition has two basic elements, main elements. A, a partially obstructed view adds no value, and B, the loss of Hudson River views from 12 Livingston resulting from the proposed 19 Livingston development would not result in loss of value, and in fact, would improve the value, because the proposed development would be residential rather than commercial, as was Rudy's bo revanche. With regards to the Fox basic value proposition, prima facie, it's not credible. One only has to look at real estate listings, apartments for rent... One only has to look at real estate listings, apartments for rent, advertisements, and talk to people who live anywhere along, close to the Hudson River view to understand the value, both qualitatively and monetarily, people place on such views. The value proposition that a view to have economic value must be completely unobstructed and that a partially obstructed view has no value is quite frankly absurd. Reductio ad absurdum, if a property were to have a magnificent 180-degree view of the Grand Canyon, but there was a small hot dog stand in the view, according to the value proposition of the Fox appraisal document, the view would have zero economic value because it is not unobstructed. If the view from 12 Livingston became a 45 to 50-foot high cement wall, which would obstruct the view, such as the proposed 19 Livingston building, it would have a negative impact on property values. I can also say that as a landlord who owns a--
Five seconds.
The second, my concern is that the Fox appraisal contains--
That's it, sir.
--litigation-related argument and is biased. Thank you.
I really don't want to say this, but is there anyone else who would like to be Okay, Mr. Shoretta, you had, you had some--
Yes. I'm ready.
Again, quickly and to the point. And new is good.
My name is Judith Spikes, 5th Ave, Terrace. That's on the corner of Clinton Avenue. I do not have river view. This does not in any way impact my river view, but I want to support the points that were made to the, to the point that this is not a matter of simply obstructing one or two persons' views. I moved to Dobbs Ferry because it's a river town, because I get to enjoy the view. And I looked to the code to tell me what I can expect when I bought my house four years ago. I didn't expect this, and I think the attorneys have told you very professionally why this project does not fit the code. And I just wanted to insert myself here as a person who does not have a direct interest in this particular project, but does have a very direct interest in what goes on with the village as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shoretta.
Thank you. You know, we've been hearing a lot tonight and we've heard it from the comments about view, about vision plan, LWRP. At the beginning of the evening, you asked about, you know, the effect of the planning board and the board of trustees approval. Well, both those approvals talked about the vision plan and the LWRP, and both said that we complied with both. So, you know, we talked about Tilly's report, and there was so much here that was said, so I'm going to go through and just address each one. With respect to Tilly's report, you know, a couple of things about that. In his letter, he admits right offhand that the dimensions of the buildings shown on approximate any states that they're inaccurate. Okay? And when you read the section of the code, of the Dobbs Ferry code, of 300-17C3, it defines the surrounding area as any lot fronting on the same street within 200 feet of the proposed site. You need to consider all of the buildings in Livingston Ridge because they are all contained within a lot that fronts Livingston Avenue and is within 200 feet of 19 Livingston. It's not simply a radius within 200 feet of property lines as Mr. Tilly uses in his analysis. Another key thing in Mr. Tilly's report that is not accurate is that the issue is not whether the proposed structure is different than buildings in the surrounding area. The issue is whether any difference in the proposed structure is excessively dissimilar, such that, quote, "so detrimental to desirability, property values, or development of the surrounding area." You know, he notes, and I quote his letter, quote, "The visual character of the project will affect not only the adjacent properties, but the entire village," close quote. That's not the standard. The entire village is not the standard that we're talking here. The code requires an analysis of the property values and development of the, quote, "surrounding area." Now, we talked about the Corales and the Bros appraisals. Now, we submit our letter that the Bros appraisal should not be considered, and in fact, the decision of the HRB only refers to the appraisal for 12 Livingston. That's the only appraisal that's referenced in the record. So to consider Mr. Bros's appraisal, particularly when his unit itself doesn't meet the 200-foot requirement, the common area maybe meets it, but should not be considered because it's not within the 200-foot radius, I'm sorry, the 200 feet and fronting Livingston Avenue. Now, regarding both appraisals, they show a loss in value due to loss in view. Again, the view over and over again, and I've been here many times, I've been to the HRB, this is not about the view. We're beyond the view, but we've heard that theme a lot tonight. Okay? It's because of any dissimilarity of the project, the HRB review is not about view. Now, other site options, we talked about, they're saying tonight, you know, this is now going almost three years of going to the planning board, trustees, HRB, your board. You know, we've looked at alternatives. We've spent a lot of time with the planning board looking at alternatives, and this is the site that works with the contours and terrain, topography of this site, and that's what was approved. Now, you're looking at Mrs. Corales's property as an exemplar, which cuts against what Mr. Tilly stated at the last board meeting, and Mr. Tilly stated here at this meeting that it would be impractical to build raised ranch houses in 19 Livingston. We all know that that's not what we want to build here. We don't want to build a raised ranch across in 19 Livingston. What we want to do is build a structure that is cohesive with the neighborhood and actually comports with the guidelines. Again, I talked about the viewing platform. We're providing one. Now, Mr. Tilly's report talks about street proportion, which is the relationship between the height of the buildings on each side of the street and the width of space between those buildings. It is not about, and he quotes, "the ratio of building to open space and of frontage to spaces between those buildings," close quote. It is about the height of the buildings, not frontage. And with respect to excessive similarity, it's comparing two proposed structures to each other not so similar as to reduce property values or diminish development. You know, I heard from Mr. Bros, and he talks about, and he was at a trustee meeting one time where he stated, quote, "I have a partial river view on the third floor window of my unit." Now, if you want to talk about Washington Arms--
That's false.
Wait, excuse me. I didn't interrupt anyone from the, from the other side.
That's just false.
There were a lot of things that were said tonight that are not accurate from, from the opposition. Now, if you want to look at Washington Arms, those are 200-foot townhome units, blocks and blocks of townhomes, if you want to compare that. Okay? And that's something that we're avoiding here with respect to our project. Talk about architecture. I said this before. You know, people, first, by history of this thing, we were here initially for a sky exposure plane, and the same folks came out saying that we didn't comply with the sky exposure plane, you'll tell the HRB. And we went back and addressed the sky exposure plane. And again, we hear a lot about view, view, view. And we also heard at the same HRB that the architecture was sound, and you've seen the videos of that and it's in the record. Okay? Now, with respect to why we're here, we're here because we have a zoning compliant plan and that we believe is architecturally sound. Okay? You know, Ms. Corales mentioned about the omissions that the HRB made in their analysis, and they omitted Livingston Ridge. Now, what wasn't quoted was the only time that you can omit. And the code provides, in 300-17C4C, the HRB may only omit buildings from its calculations of limits on ridge height, eve height, and sky exposure plane. The HRB's power to assess whether proposed development is excessively dissimilar is governed by 300-17C3. Livingston Ridge is within 200 feet of LDG's proposed development and fronts, again, it fronts Livingston Avenue. It cannot be disregarded as a, quote, "anomaly" in the HRB's excessive dissimilarity analysis, and it must be considered. This is not about, I heard comments about the view about people walking by, it's not about that, nor is it about frontage, or rather, you know, I heard a comment that, you know, the code doesn't require that we compare frontage of different types of units. It doesn't say that. Okay? Again, with respect to, we hear a lot tonight about alternate, alternative plans. We went through that. This is now a three-year process. As an applicant, we have an expectation to follow the code, which we have done, and have our approvals. We ask tonight that you reverse the Architectural Review Board with respect to their findings, which we believe are not supported by the record. And again, we've been here for a long time. You've heard, you've heard me speak a number of occasions. You've heard Mr. Fox speak tonight. You didn't hear tonight from Landmark. They weren't here to present. They had discussed their appraisal or had any backup with respect to their report. And lastly, again, we'd like to see this project go up. We'd like to see that the HRB determination be reversed and that we like this project approved. Again, we've complied with the zoning code. I didn't hear anything tonight that we don't comply with the code. We do. We also comply with the design guidelines, as we've demonstrated to you. Mr. Carhu, you have my letter, you have our submission, and with all, with all due respect, I think we've exhausted our comments this evening on our side. So again, we thank you for your time and consideration, and we would hope you approve this project.
Could I make one, have one final question for you, Mr. Shoretta?
Yes, sir.
In the criteria for the decision, the Architectural and Historic Review Board shall approve, approve with modifications and/or conditions or deny a permit for a building or structure in accordance with the expertise and judgment of its members, who shall be guided in their decision by the following. And it includes downtown design guidelines, residential design guidelines, vision plan, The latter discuss views. And I guess my question to you is, why do you think views are not part of this, this decision? Not, not the entire decision, but why they are not relevant to this, to this decision?
Because it's my submission that the view is for the planning board, and that's been stated over and over in this record. It's a, it's a function of the planning board, and that's what the planning board, even in their resolution, talks about, that the view, that we meet the view guidelines. Okay? It's not, and this was stated at the HRB by its chairman, that they were not here to talk about view, because it's on the record that the HRB specifically stated that they weren't talking about view. And that there are a number of meetings where they state that we're not here for the view. Okay? Originally, it was about sky exposure plane for a year and a half. They love the architecture, as the minutes and the videos reflect, but then we get a determination on excessive dissimilarity and similarity. So I submit to you, the only issue you have this evening are those criteria. Because as far as view, that's been addressed. It's a dead horse. We went over it. The board went over it, and they even said on the record that we're not here about view.
You don't think view relates to desirability? Desirability is one of the criteria, isn't it?
Right, but it's not, desirability, this is, we're getting into a subjective realm here. It really is. We can make up anything for desirability. We can talk about, it could be view, it could be whatever we want it to be.
It's your position that that's been decided and it can't be any part of our decision?
That's correct. In terms of view, it's been established, and, you know, I would ask the village attorney if you want to opine on that, if it's so warranted.
View is not, not in the criteria of the planning board.
It is, and it's also referenced in their determination. It is part of their, their criteria.
But insofar--
And it's been, it's been acknowledged as much too. I mean, we have a record that specifically states that the HRB is not about the view. So if you're going to go contrary to what's been stated in public record by the HRB by planning and by the other, there was a, I think chairman and a former chairman of the HRB, they've all opined on that this is not about the view.
You know, in, for the planning board, they discuss vision plan and LWRP, as well as environmental issues, sighting of buildings and whatnot. It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't exclude us from, from, from considering LWRP issues or, or vision plan issues. Is that, am I correct on that, Counselor?
The LWRP, I think, is, is it 400 or 700 pages? You can consider anything in the LWRP. The issue about a view, I think it's in 346 of the code, it was addressed by the planning board. Whether you can address it also is something that you can consider. I think you should look at the planning board resolution, the board of trustees resolution when doing so. I don't have an opinion on it, obviously, but they did look at it. You should, you should take a look at the specific LWRP section that you want to cite and either way you want to go, and/or the view issue, and you need to make an informed I think the planning board required them to build a viewing platform--
To build a viewing platform, yes.
I think they were calling--
But insofar as view impacts desirability, I don't understand how we are procluded from dealing with that.
If you find that desirability and view were one and the same, it has to be so detrimental to the desirability of, of properties within 200 feet. I mean, the thought process is, is any view could be taken by someone across the street. You don't own, if you don't own on the water, your view is always subject to be obstructed. Always. This was, I believe, I don't recall these, I saw some of the pictures, but whether one house has had a partial view and doesn't is something you can consider or may not going forward.
And just as was said, the expectation of view, you're across from was formerly a commercial establishment, and it's a private, it's a private lot. It's not, it's not, it's not unobstructed. So the, the expectation of view that one has, okay, across from a lot that can be developed, that has to be looked at. They can't have a determination where you're looking at a view that's completely unobstructed, because that's not what we have here. It's one thing when they're right on the Hudson looking at a view, wholly different when you're on the west side, rather east side of the street, looking across over property that can be developed. There's no, there's no expectation here.
If I may, just very briefly because of the hour. Mr. Brozzi asked me to present this photograph, which is taken from his first floor window, just indicating that he can in fact see his property on the Hudson River. As far as the view is concerned, absolutely, that's something this board respectfully needs to consider as part of the excessive dissimilarity and similarity analysis. The view is a symptom of things like massing and cubical footage and other criteria. Lastly, our appraiser, unfortunately, on such short notice couldn't be here this evening, but I believe their reports speak for themselves. Thank you.
Move to close?
I don't know if Brian heard--
Brian, I move to close and, and John second. Do you deny this?
I think we affirm--
We affirm, we affirm the denial. Do you want to do that in a second?
Did, did we vote on closing?
Yes. Oh, no, we did not. We all vote on closing.
You have to give all--
Yep.
I move to affirm the denial of the application. I'll go through a few of my reasons that I think are the most compelling. These aren't the only ones.
Should we, should we do a second first and then--
They want to do a motion and a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They're going to have discussion.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, sorry. I'll second.
If there's a second, assume--
I'll second.
Chairman?
I do.
I think the most striking criteria is the excessive dissimilarity, and it's based on very objective facts about the height, width, cubic content, floor area, and I think there is no way to say that it's not excessively dissimilar from the other buildings within the relevant area. If the only other structure in the area were Livingston Ridge, I would say it's dissimilar, but not excessively dissimilar, because I think Livingston-- but not excessively dissimilar, because I think Livingston Ridge, unlike this project, does a much better job of dividing, of weaving some views, weaving some space. And I think, and I do think that we're entitled to consider that the, the view is part of the entire concept of desirability. It affects property values. It's not, you know, I will certainly take into account that other boards have expressed a position with regard to that. I don't think that any board has made any decision that eliminated that from the purview of the AHRB or from this board. And if, to get back to my other point, if you look at the entire relevant area, the houses to either side of 19 Livingston, the ones directly across the street, there is just an overwhelming disproportion in the massing and all the other size-related factors. And I, I do believe that it's been established by a preponderance of the evidence that that excessive dissimilarity is harmful to the desirability of this area. And I do think that we can take into account that it's an area that the vision guidelines treat as a special part of the village. And I think it is demonstrated by at least a preponderance that the, the look of this structure, the, basically, the uninterrupted massing that is what anyone will see, either from their house or from walking by, is detrimental to the overall value and desirability of this, of this neighborhood. And so, based, based on, based on that more than anything, I think there are other things in the AHRB decision that I would also, I also think are supportable, but I, I don't think, I don't think it's really necessary to look further than the excessive dissimilarity, which to me is very compelling.
May I?
Sure.
Be a, I would ask, what do you see in the record before us that demonstrates by any evidence that even if we assume that this is dissimilar, that it will be detrimental? The only evidence we have before us is an appraisal by Landmark, which looked at an unobstructed view to an obstructed view, rather than comparing partially obstructed to obstructed or obstructed to obstructed. So what value does the Landmark appraisal have to us? So what's in the record for us to make that conclusion? And I say that with all sympathy. I think Ms. Corrales and Ms. Brosi have been very eloquent in their presentation. I understand what they're saying, and I get it, but I don't see it in all record.
I, I think that if, if the sole criteria were property value, it would be, it would be a, I, I would agree more with what you're saying. I think that's one of, you know, it's, it's, it's the desirability of the neighborhood. I think we have a report from Mr. Tilly that I find persuasive on the impact of the extreme massing of this, this building on the desirability, which I do think is a broader concept than just the value. Although I do think there's a certain common sense that you can look at the appraisal and the, the challenge to it by Mr. Fox, which basically assumes no value to a view. I think that that is not a credible position. I think, and I, I think we do have enough on the record from, from the 12 Livingston appraisal. And I think that, combined with common sense and experience, tells us that, that not just a loss of view, but the idea of being across the street from this mammoth structure that goes on and on. And I think despite the, you know, efforts to characterize it as something else, if you look at a picture of it on a map, it is more than double the size of the largest structures near it, and far in excess of the size of most of the structures near it. I do, and I agree that it's not just 150 feet fairly close to the street, which would be significant, but that there isn't a second building so that if you're on the street, I don't know the exact measurement, but it's 155 or 160 feet of, not just blocked view, but blocked air, blocked sense of openness. And I think that has to affect the desirability and, and also the development, the desired, you know, the impact of how other things in this vicinity will be developed, and how, how this property could be developed. So that's, that's why I have made the motion.
Let me ask another question of my colleagues. And I don't know that I place any value in either appraisal, but returning to the prior board determinations, we're faced with a site plan that's been approved by the planning board, which basically clusters this development and in some ways causes the massing that we're seeing here. And then if we are to give some value and respect to those prior determinations, whether or not we agree with them or not, those are determinations that were made by other boards. So I throw it out there. I mean, that's forcing some of the massing that you're seeing, which the architect tries to deal with.
Well, it, it's forcing it, but, but it was chosen by the applicant. You know, this is the plan that they chose to go through both boards, knowing full well that they would have to go through the architectural review board and, and to meet their, their standards, you know, which include dissimilarity. And I have the same, I, I've wrestled with the same, same issues. You know, why did they approve something this big? And I guess I came to the conclusion was that there was nothing prohibiting them from doing so.
Based on their criteria.
Based on their criteria. But the criteria for this board today are, are different.
Contours, terrain, site drainage, vehicle, vehicle traffic around the site. I mean, they're just very different things that I think the planning board is looking at. So to Peter's point, they bring, the applicant brings a plan to them, and they look at it relative to those criteria. And I think they said yes or no. And I think there is always, to some extent, there is that risk insofar as the planning board makes a recommendation. And they always know, to, to the village board, the village board takes an up or down vote on it, but they always know that the AHRB is after, comes after, and they have different criteria.
And this was not a slam dunk there. I mean, this, this took ages to get through.
Right.
I can't say there were significant changes, but, you know...
But I, I don't think that approval forces the applicant to present a plan that is as dissimilar as this one is, and that has the adverse effects on, on the neighborhood that result from that excessive dissimilarity.
Yeah, on the point of excessive dissimilarity, I, for me, I'm actually looking maybe beyond the, the issue of value for any single person across the street or what have you, or the view of any single person. We are also guided by the vision plan. The vision plan is definitive about the importance of this site and views around, over, through this site. I don't know how we, I don't know how we get around that. I don't know how we ignore that. It specifically says, "You shall be guided by the vision plan." And the vision plan, this, I don't, I don't want to say, you know, this site has, it has certain standards, insofar as it's specifically mentioned in the vision plan.
Right, it's called out.
So the people who wrote it, they had something in mind there, right? And I don't know if we can ignore that. So I'm, I'm less compelled, I suppose, by any, any specific person's views toward it. But in, I'd see it more from a broader context, broader perspective about the general public, about, about what we want to say about the village, what Dobbs Ferry wants to say about itself as people progress down this, down this, this, this street, through this gateway and what have you. I think it's easy to be, get caught up in, it's about my view, and it's about my appraisal and value of my house, and, you know, that type of thing. There's a broader context, I think, to consider.
And I guess the other thing is, I mean, the site offers flexibility to accommodate, you know, the, the different, different points of view from the, from the code. You know, it's not like, I mean, the, the only way you can, the only way you can go contra to the vision plan and to that view is with buildings that are, that stretch as, 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 as much as these do, you know? And it's then in the context where the average house is 25 or, or 35 or 40 feet, you know, square. You know, if you look at...
Appreciate that. I guess my only concern remains whether we have enough objective criteria to the detrimental effects. But I think we've spoken on the record. Want to take a vote or further comment?
Do you think we, do you still think we don't? I mean, our, I mean, I, I understand the financial issue is, you know, is...
I think...
I think, I think there's a case for a financial diminution. It's, it may or may not be...
My gut feeling might be that that is true, but...
Material.
Whether or not we have that in the record. But if, if my fellow members think we have it in the record, we should put it to a vote.
Lot's been said.
All in favor? All against?
Second. All right.